Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our middle school naming public forum. We can start over the ground rules. Then I'm going to go over the sheet that you guys got at the door. And as it sets down, if you didn't see it, there's some back there. Please feel free to go grab one about how we got here and got to scheduling this forum in the first place. Actually, maybe I'll go over that first. So just so everybody understands, I know there's been a lot of discussion. Let's go with that discussion personally between people on social media. There's been a lot of discussion around the middle school naming process. So as will happen when somebody paraphers, is what someone hears, is what someone hears. You know, sometimes what I have seen on social media is pretty far cry from how it actually happens. So this is put together as kind of a cheat sheet to understand here we came up with this process, where it even came from in the first place and why we felt we needed to vote on a process. So as everyone in town will remember, you know, in April of 2021, Norwood pastor Luride who had funded the new middle school. Incredibly grateful to people who are in Norwood for that mode of support. We really desperately need a new state-of-the-art middle school for our students to continue the wonderful education in the town of Norwood. In the fall of 2021, some individuals from the community just kind of impacting, started to reach out and ask, "Well, what do you going to name it?" And, you know, so there was some discussion that we needed to have a fair and equitable process to be able to get community input about that. There was, so in five, three, and twenty-three, we actually got ahead of our agenda. We actually created a process to be able to adopt in accordance with our policy FF, a process to collect community input about the naming of the new middle school. On five, twenty-five, we announced and posted the community survey. At our meeting on June 21st, we shared the results of the survey during that meeting in which we announced that the top three suggestions from that community survey were the Dr. Philip Oakley Middle School, Norwood Middle School, and the Robert Fitzpatrick Middle School. Just to reiterate, the purpose of that survey was not to be a vote. It wasn't designed that way. It wasn't something we thought we could get out of that. So, you know, I understand that we did get quite a few suggestions. For example, Dr. Philip Oakley Middle School. And that is wonderful. But the purpose of that survey was to get all of the suggestions. But the top three suggested names were what I just read off. In July, in our July 18th meeting, we did come back and, you know, with some community input and then with discussion amongst the school committee members, we did vote unanimously to amend the process because originally we had voted to allow the students of the Oakley Middle School to vote, to have a final vote. We did understand that that, given the feedback we were getting from the community, was not something that we wanted to move forward with. But we did vote unanimously and we retained the public forum in accordance with the process that we set forward. We felt it was important to stick to the process that we had voted on that way. So where are we now? We're here. So we are at the middle school naming public forum that we voted that we would have. We are absolutely invited members of the community, as many of you have already registered, to, you know, speak to us about, you know, feelings. This is also, this is a public forum where during our meetings in the public comments portion, we do not have the ability to have a back-up conversation with, as per our policies, with those coming to speak to us. So for those watching on TV, you know, it might seem rude that we are not, you know, answering questions or not, you know, talking back, but that is in accordance with our policies and in our public comment segment. I would thank the public that we're the only public board left in Norwood that allows a public comment segment. And we do believe it's important to hear from our community and we will keep it, but at least in your future. And, but that is the reasoning why we don't have that. So there is also reasoning to have this type of forum where we have posted, we will be able to have dialogue, we will be able to have questions to answer from the community. So that does bring us to the protocols for tonight. And I did bring it up because I don't want to mess it up. So as it stands for our policies, if you are registered to speak or you decide you would like to speak to us, there is a three-minute time limit per comment. And then we would allow for a two-minute response from the school committee. Then we only leave this room until eight-thirty. So we're at about eight-twenty-five. If there are still, you know, questions, we are going to move to closing remarks and end this forum for the evening. You can ask questions once all of the registered speakers have had a chance to speak. I will invite others, as they would see fit, to also speak. At that time, we will also open it up to everybody for questions, for, you know, question-and-answer session. So having said that, I think we should move right into our public speakers so that we can get...
Are you recording?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm recording for the Norwood Record.
Okay, so you're aware that we are being filmed through NCM and we'll be able to access that?
Absolutely.
Can we just make sure everybody in the audience is aware that he's recording on private device? Can you just give any other notes?
Yes.
It's illegal to do it without everybody's consent, so I just want to make sure everybody knew. Okay, we're good.
Thank you. Okay, so pre-registered, our first speaker for the evening is Mr. Mark Joseph.
Hi, I'm Mark Joseph. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to this evening. I was a member of the Norwood School Committee in 2004. At the time, we're changing from the junior high to the middle school block. We unanimously voted to name the school the Dr. Philip Oakley Middle School. The school was long dedicated in 2004 with Dr. Oakley in his family present. And now fast forwarding to April of 2022, where we, the voters, were asked to pass an override question for a new, much-needed Oakley Middle School. The valid question, last line reads, "The new Oakley Middle School project located in 1315 Washington Street, Norwood, Mass. O2062." A statement set out the night the Norwood Middle School Building School Committee stated, from Tony Mazzucco, town manager, superintendent, and the Norwood Middle School Building Committee, "They wish to thank the voters for their approval of the new Oakley Middle School Project's associated proposition, two-and-a-half debt exclusion during today's election." On Tuesday, June 13th, there was an official Oakley Middle School groundbreaking ceremony, which was posted on the official Middle School Building School Building Committee's website. Clearly, these three examples show that the name is the Oakley Middle School. What we'd like to know is who decided to change the name? Why was this decision made? Was it because you were unaware of Dr. Oakley and his lasting impact on the Norwood Public Schools? Clearly, the summer, educational leaders, former town officials, family members tested to Dr. Oakley's lasting legacy on the Norwood Public Schools. A wartime veteran, an educational leader, and a mentor to one of the greatest generations of teachers to ever teach in the Norwood Public Schools. A man who included girls and boys in his before-age, far before his time, as you heard speakers attest to. A man with a vision for the space issues facing the Norwood Public Schools, who, with the town manager, worked out a deal to acquire the bird property for what was and what will become the future Oakley Middle School. As many speakers told you, there has never been a superintendent since Dr. Oakley who has accomplished what he did during his tenure. While other suggestions were brought up, and with no disrespect to any of them, clearly, Dr. Oakley's name came first. In your own survey of approximately 240 responses, that was the top suggestion. Over 3,000 people from the town of Norwood signed a petition to keep the Oakley Middle School name. You heard from over 12 very respected educational, former, former-town officials supporting Oakley Middle School. And both led us to the editor and on social media, Oakley was clearly the name supported. No other school has been lobbying for or advocating more than Dr. Philip Oakley Middle School. Keep the Oakley Middle School name and respect the legacy of Dr. Oakley, his family, and the voters. It is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. So because again, this is a public forum and we can respond. I did want to just, I oversimplified when I went through our timeline. I just want to respond to just one piece about who brought up the naming. And as I kind of glossed over, you know, not only were people saying, "Well, what are you going to name it?", but there were community members and community groups that came forward to suggest new names for the middle school because, and not to take away from Dr. Oakley at all, but in their minds, it was a new building, so it was going to get a new name. And this was the chance to put, you know, their stamp or suggestion into the history of Norwood. So and I do want to make sure that public understands that throughout the process of the operational override, we did not, I'm sorry, that is not right, that is the wrong override. That we, or this was not something that we were discussing, doing. This was not something that we, you know, planned in advance and, you know, making switch with the Oakley Middle School being put out there on papers and then afterwards, "Ha-ha!", you know, we're going to rename it. And that was never what happened. It was after the override, you know, community members, community groups contacting members of the school committee to make suggestions when it became clear that we needed a process to move that forward to understand if any more of the community felt that way and what their suggestions would be because that is our duty as elected officials. Okay, our next registered speaker is Mr. Ernie Pachakowski.
Good evening. My name is Ernie Pachakowski, and I am speaking tonight as a board member of the Norwood High School Alumni Association and as a resident. Over the last few months, you have heard from many people who have spoken on this topic during your public forums. Many are here again tonight. You have heard from private citizens, Oakley family members, town officials, and many former distinguished educators, including a superintendent, school committee members, principals, and teachers, all speaking in support of retaining the name Oakley Middle School. To my knowledge, I have not heard of anyone speaking in favor of another name at any of these forums. I understand that most or all of you don't know who this man was or why we want to keep the name. So I would like to give you a little history of who Dr. Oakley was and why we want to maintain the Oakley Middle School name. Dr. Oakley was a 1936 Norwood High School graduate, a World War II veteran, who lived in town and raised his family here. As superintendent for 18 years, he oversaw the school system during a time of tremendous growth in our town. During his tenure as superintendent, he opened the Oldham and Willett Elementary Schools, three major expansions, the Balch, the Cleveland, and the high school, which basically doubled the size of that school. In a 24-hour period, a fire destroyed the junior high and three grades woke up the next morning with no school to go to. He had to implement double sessions for the students with all the logistical problems that go with that. He saw the building and opening of two new junior highs basically at the same time. In one summer, he closed two elementary schools, the Winslow and Shattuck, and combined them to open another new elementary school, the Guile. Due to overcrowding at the high school, he instituted the open campus concept, where if students didn't have a class, they could leave the school property. You've got to remember that that drinking age was 18 back then, which brought on yet its own set of potential problems. Even with all of this, the students of Norwood continued to receive a first-class education and graduating classes were consistently over 500 students. Buildings, parks, and other things have been named after people by past town boards to honor and remember those who contributed to the benefit of the town, the betterment of the town, and so that their names and accomplishments would not be forgotten. Let's not erase this part of our town's history. Instead, let's teach the students who these people were and why buildings a name for them. I don't think you will find a person more worthy than Philip Oakley. So we urge you to please continue to call it the Oakley Middle School. Thank you.
We will go to our next registered speaker, Ms. Laney Higgins.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the comments of the last two speakers. And now I would like to just share a little bit about Robert Fitzpatrick. And there's a little bit more emotion into this because after all, I'm a sister. So school committee chair, school committee members, and Norwood residents. My brother John and I would like to thank those individuals who have brought forth Robert Fitzpatrick's name as a possible choice for the renaming of the new middle school. My name is Laney Fitzpatrick Higgins, and I'm Bob's sister. I lived in Norwood for over 25 years. And our mother, Lorraine, worked several years for the music department and at Norwood Junior High South. Bob and I both attended Stonehill College and like Bob, I served over 30 years as a teacher, always learning so much more from Bob than the courses that I took. Many of you may know Bob or someone who knew Bob. For those of you who don't, he spent 33 years as a beloved Norwood teacher and three years as a dedicated principal preparing students for a middle school that he never imagined might be named after him. I realize that two of the three possible options, my brother known as Mr. Fitz and Dr. Oakley, are very worthy candidates. They both represent the Norwood tradition of responsibility for ensuring that all students receive an excellent education and are prepared for the future. Bob actually took it a step further to ensure that students knew someone truly cared for them and respected them. And he wanted the students in turn to care and respect each other. One of Bob's favorite presidents, Teddy Roosevelt, once stated, "No one cares how much you know until they know how much you care." That was Bob's approach to teaching. When I think about who may have nominated Mr. Fitz, five scenarios come to mind, but 100 more could have been shared as well. First, there was an excellent middle school English teacher, Mrs. Follensby, who asked students to write an essay describing an adult in their elementary school or in the Norwood community that had influenced their lives in a positive way. Several students each year wrote incredible essays about Mr. Fitz. Now the social media and many of those same students and more shared their accolades about Bob on the Norwood Alumni site called Best, and then there was a site called Best Teacher Ever, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Together, there's over 300 comments. Secondly, before the state provided breakfast food for the students each morning, Mr. Fitz did. It was Mr. Fitz that noticed that some students arrived too hungry and some were having difficulty maintaining focus and retaining information. This was long before research proved that to be true. So Bob decided to have breakfast in his room and bought the cereal and the milk. Students would eagerly commit to school, enjoy it. Some students were now early to school rather than late. They also were more focused and retained information. Perhaps those students nominated Mr. Fitz. Before the recreation center and school sports offered scholarships, Mr. Fitz did anonymously. I'd like to share just one of the many examples of his generosity. He noticed two boys at recess playing basketball, and he asked them, "What team do you play on?" They said they did not play on the team. That was because they had a single mom and she was working and it was minimum wage and she couldn't afford it. So Bob went ahead and paid for everything, got transportation for them. But he needed the mom to sign the paper allowing them to play. So on Saturday morning, he went to the apartment Windsor Gardens and had the mother sign the boys played. Perhaps it was those two brothers and mother that nominated Mr. Fitz.
Missing?
Yes, most of them.
You, yes.
Okay. He also went on to have the unique, see all the possibilities for the female students in his class. He brought in special people to speak, and maybe it was those women now who have successful careers that also voted and nominated for Bob. Finally, Dr. Seuss wrote The Places You Will Go. Mr. Fitz always believed his students would go great places. Many of them came back and said, "I became a teacher because of you." And the last student he talked to was in the hospital. Just before Bob passed away, a doctor came in and said to him, "You have a month to live." He said, "I'm Dr. O'Connor," and he went out. The doctor came back in. He said, "Mr. Fitz, did you teach at Calligan School?" He said, "Yes, I did." Bob and he had a great conversation. Bob left the hospital, died a few months later, but all he could talk about was the conversation that he had with that student and how proud he was of him. So I'd just like to say that I thank you for listening and I thank the people that nominated him. And we have two very worthy candidates, and I thank you for considering Bob.
Next, we'll move on to go to a side as they arrive today. And next on the list is Mr. Mike Long.
Thank you all, school committee. I just want to thank you for reading into the record my comments back then, I think it was June 20th. I'm not going to spend a lot of time reiterating what I stated at that time. I did want to just kind of review my take on things. I mentioned in my letter that a year ago, in June of 2022, and throughout that summer, the entire Norwood community was in the process of celebrating Norwood 150. And we spent quite a bit of time celebrating the great things happening in the Norwood school system, all of the individual schools. And for anybody living in the town, it was a great opportunity to see firsthand the rich history and bright future of Norwood's school system. And in reflecting on that, I would just simply say that each of these Norwood schools is a reflection of Norwood's rich history and bright future. And the man that has had the middle school named after him is such an integral part of that. Dr. Oakley's contribution to the Norwood educational growth is unparalleled and generational. I can't repeat all of the stuff that Ernie had said earlier, so I won't. But I will say his body of work of developing what he has in Norwood schools is legendary and his comprehensive gifts to our educational community really does epitomize the phrase "rich history and bright future" that's we needed to Norwood. The last thing I'd like to say is that I agree with every single word that Laney just stated a few minutes ago. I will say that her brother Bob Fitzpatrick is one of the finest educators this town has ever had, will ever have. So I'm standing here, Laney, by the way, full disclosure, Laney's brother Johnny is one of my best friends in life. So I'm feeling a little bit awkward up here right now. But my point is this, no one in this room is trying to take anything away from Bob Fitzpatrick or anybody else in the community, but simply look to make sure that nothing gets taken away from Dr. Oakley as well for all of his accomplishments over his lifetime. Bob Fitzpatrick, in my humble opinion, will be recognized for the great work that he did at some future date, if not, you know, at the end of this process. He will be, he's already been recognized by anybody that knows anything about the Norwood community and his contribution to it. He was an outstanding educator. Again, my goal is to simply assure that Dr. Oakley's name does not get removed from his contribution to the rich history and bright future of Norwood. And thank you for listening.
If you are wondering, I have a little left and right. I just want to make sure that no one on the community has any comments or anything to add to each speaker. So next on the list is Ms. Jean Rahm Taylor.
Jean Rahm Taylor, scoot my back. I, Chrissy, I remember, and I would love to see him honored. He definitely deserves to be honored, but not by pulling out the honor that we have given to Dr. Philip Oakley. There's so many different ways that we come on him, and we have a lot of things going into the middle school. Libraries, I'm sure we'll be building other things. And I don't want to take away from him either, he was also a volunteer. There's nothing I can add to already justifiable plural reasons given for keeping the middle school, the Dr. Philip Oakley Middle School. As a town member, I voted to rebuild and to give money for the Oakley Middle School. If the name change had been on that, I wouldn't have voted for it. I would have wanted an addendum, but it was going to remain the same. I now don't have a vote except through my school committee. So I ask that you please, I believe, keep the name because I think the majority of people would like to keep that name. I do feel the board was right in responding positively when we were asked to look more closely at inclusion. But I am asking you now to take seriously into consideration that Norwood has always been an inclusive town when making decisions. The naming of the middle school was no exception. You've heard why Dr. Oakley was chosen to be a permanent part of the Norwood Middle School system and in Norwood's history. In my experiences on committees I have served, inclusion was always upfront and on the table. We are lucky to have such a diverse community and have so many dedicated residents that have earned a place in Norwood's history. There are many ways to be inclusive without changing the name of the Dr. Oakley Middle School. Please consider this when you vote, and thank you for your time. It was a pleasure.
I just want to say thanks to you for those comments. And just to reiterate that you mentioned that if the naming had been on the table, you would have voted differently. And I just want to reiterate what I think we tried to get across, that we didn't know that the naming was necessarily going to come up. So it came up after the fact, and when it did, we, you know, we had to engage in a process and respond in a way that we were obligated to in terms of our policy and in terms of fairness to the community. So I just want to be clear that there was no agenda and there was no, again, like Amber said, baby switch intended here.
Those are just...
Thank you.
Okay, so we will have our registered speaker next listed speaker. And I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher this. Ms. Kate Girard? Nope? Okay, moving on. Is Ms. Jill Russell.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jill Russell, and unlike all the other speakers, I am a... I am a carpetbagger. I moved to Norwood thirty-six years ago. I choose to wear that name thinking that it's one of affection. So I hope you'll be willing to hear what I wanted to say. I'm sort of throwing out an idea for maybe a little, a little wiggle room in this a little bit, thinking that maybe our secondary schools should be the Norwood Middle School and the Norwood High School. Part of being a carpetbagger is when you get here and you're making this town your home, you try and learn as much as you can about our neighborhood and people that grew up here. You walk around, there are Neatown buildings, there are parks, there are... So when you don't grow up here, you go look all night up, if you're a nerd carpetbagger. I think for a fairly moderate-sized town, this town has produced a prolific number of really influential people, and not just in education, but, you know, in economics, engineering, literature, poetry, art, music, like amazing people that have contributed tremendously to their field. So I was thinking that wouldn't it be nice if we honored all those different people in our sort of middle and high school buildings? If we hadn't reduced it at all, wouldn't it be kind of fun if there were more names? And then, because I never sort of don't want things to be educational, and I really liked when David Hilfs had mentioned at the beginning, including our kids, thinking that it might be something that could be a project for the Norwood school students in the middle and the senior high school, where they would pick somebody that was of interest to them or their profession was of interest to them. They could do the research, find a nice picture, write maybe three-quarters of the page. And then at the bottom, it would be a research by Harry historian, classic Tony twenty-eight, you know? And then just put them in a simple frame, in classrooms and auditoriums and, you know, hallways, and give the kids a little bit of inspiration and instead of pride, some pride in their school, their community. So it was just a little suggestion I wanted to share.
Thanks so much. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Okay, so that is everybody who has pre-registered or signed in today. So unless anybody wants to respond, sorry.
Hi, I have an overall response. So I have an overall response. One of the things I might emphasize about this process is that this is what it looks like when a board seeks the opinion of its community, right? And so I am actually thrilled at the amount of dialogue that has gone on about this because there's no other way for us to know what's important to the community other than to ask. And so for me, that's what the point of this process was about, was about creating a space so that there could be dialogues, that there could be conversations, so we could know what the community wanted. And I understand it must be frustrating to see this process driven on from us and feel like we're not listening. But the bottom line is that we laid out a process from the beginning in May so that we could seek as much public input and comment as possible. So I've gotten emails saying, why don't you ask us? And I guess what I'm trying to say is that this whole process is us trying to ask the town. And so I just, I want to thank everybody who has sent us emails, who has come to public comment, who have come to a public comment in here, who or who have just come here because that involvement in the process and that dialogue is what we were hoping for, was to hear what was important to the community. So thank you.
So again, that was everyone who signed in, but at this time, if anybody else, is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I took these away before. Maybe everybody got to sign in.
Good evening. My name is Jack Taylor. I live in the Love Monroe Street in Norwood. I'm a town meeting member, and I've lived here all my life. I went to St. Catherine's. I went to the junior high, went to the dial medical building, and I went with ISW. As a town meeting member among my dear wife for so many years, I can't remember how many. But when this matter came up before town meeting, I assumed that when we passed the override, we would keep the name of Dr. Philip Copley. I assumed that, and I would hope we'd still do it. History of this town is very important. The man that I know was involved in this history is Dr. Copley. So I'd ask you to consider keeping the name, as I assumed it would be. And I know when you assume something, I know it does. But I ask you to keep it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Johnson. I've been a resident of Norwood for the past forty years. I'm all in that I did not have the opportunity to go through the Norwood's school system. And this has become sort of a blown-up issue in my perspective, and a lot of my neighbors' mothers and fathers of children who are now in the Norwood's school system from kindergarten on up are concerned. And they don't understand why the buh-ha is going on about changing the name of Copley Middle School. And at the dedication of groundbreaking, it was specified it would go forward as the William Copley Middle School. And I think at this point of time, with a new building going up, being erected, and there's going to be a lot of issues that will come to the forefront with the building and the planning and everything, that is peak status quo. Get on with the real need of what's the youth people are facing. And you have the school building coming up. And a lot of, I'm just saying this, that's deprimatious because the parents of the children that are going to the school system, there are so many mothers and fathers aligned at the brashness and the hidden and the foul language being used at the Willow kindergarten school. Two who could afford it have decided to send their children to St. Catherine's because if kindergarteners are kicking hidden teachers and using foul language.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to wait. Yeah.
That needs to be addressed.
Are you going to, I'm sorry, is this going to come back to the naming of the school? Because that's the point of it.
I understand that, but the naming of the school is not your major issues. And from what I've heard from the people in the middle school, children going there, it is out of control. And it's at the point you almost need police officers in there because there's a very, very disruptive group of children.
This is public, you're in need of a public comment, and it's actually illegal for us to respond or to...
Okay, I'm just saying this, you don't have to respond. But I'd like you people to keep your awareness of the real important issues going on, can be good growing up.
The appropriate place to address that would be to come to our next business meeting and address your comments during a public comment.
Okay, I look forward to that.
Great, or you send us an email. Thank you.
First, I just want to echo John and thank everybody for your feedback. And I'm sitting here, I'm trying to compose how I want to respond to something without potentially creating other issues and throwing people under the bus. But a process that a lot of you keep referencing from the middle school building committee were decisions that weren't made by people who are not at this table, and perhaps who do not have the authority to make certain decisions. And throughout this building project, there have been some decisions under the scope of the middle school building committee, and there have been some decisions under the scope of the school committee. And unfortunately, transparent communication hasn't always happened like it should have. And I feel very sorry for any confusion that has happened at town meeting. And I have been on the middle school building committee since day one. Other school committee members have been on it with me. Originally, it was David Katani for a few years, then it was Maya Groh-Tawser, and most recently, it's David Hilfs. But this project can be confusing under what is under the authority of who. And what my colleagues have said is true in that the school committee never said, we are going to change the name. We're still not saying we're going to change the name. But at no point in the override process do we have some discussion that if people vote for the name, then we're going to do a bait and switch. But what also never happened was full transparency and cooperation with the school committee and agreement of how that website was going to be built and what language was going to be used at town meeting on a new project. So I just feel that I need to clarify that a little bit and hopefully help you understand what is under school committee purview and what was under the middle school building committee because of two separate reasons. Naming of the building is a hundred percent under the authority of the school committee.
Okay.
Okay. It's a hundred percent under the authority of the school committee. And it did come up at more than the middle school building committee at some point, and I can go back a minute and find it for you. It was pre-COVID, it was at the Copley, it was in the library. I remember when somebody said, hey, what are we naming the building? And I said, with all due respect, that is a school committee issue, not a middle school building committee issue. Thank you.
I just want to make it clear that we are very aware of all the important things that are on our table and that we, this process is not unimportant in the sense that we have policies that guide it and we have to worry about equity in terms of our community input. But we have a lot on our plate, and we're very aware of that. And we're very aware of the stakes that exist in terms of our students and our teachers and our learners. So unfortunately, we can't, you know, cherry pick which obligations we have to the community. So we have to give this process its due and also get on to the very important challenges and success that is going on in our schools. So I just want to...
Yes.
Can I say something? I'm...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, I have a microphone scoundrel here. I got my headset, I finished with a little microphone.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody for the very, very articulate and very cogent expression of their feelings.
Would you mind just telling us who you are?
I am apologizing. I'm Monica Phillips Shum. I am a District Three Town Meeting Member. And this is Reagan here, Dr. Copley's family members. In reference to that, I came from South Norwood very proudly. It was a very epic day in Norwood. And we were named the Balsch School. Why do you say, okay, that's fine? I never honestly knew who Balsch was. I thought it was a gentleman who owned the drugstore on the opposite corner of that school. And this is going way back. I'm seeing some recognition here. But anyway, I think I'm seeing that we do have a few opportunities here tonight. I have the privilege of knowing both Fitzy and Dr. Copley. Fitzy was an extraordinary human being, an extraordinary man from the time he was a boy, I would tell you. And I think I see an opportunity here that we've touched on, and I think we have to really follow this away and take it very seriously. We have an opportunity to honor Fitzy in a different fashion. And I think we need to seize upon these things. I think that's a brilliant idea. Because I want to have children now, before they are a senior citizen, try and figure out who they have against people are when they come up. So I think that's an excellent opportunity. I think we also have a teaching moment coming up here. I know that I feel very strongly that we need to not erase, we need to not replace. There's far too much of that going on. We have abandoned a lot of things, including civility and good manners. And I think that what really touched on my heart my first Met Hall Reagan was that that was an emotional thing for her, just as it is for Mr. Fitzpatrick as well. These are emotional ideas, but the thing is, to take some of its name off a building removes that little bit of permanence that they could have. Balsch is still Balsch, and he's been gone since, I think, around the eighteen-seventies. So that's a pretty darn good record for longevity. So now, we have an opportunity to immortalize Dr. Copley so that future generations will want to know who he is. But I think we also cannot forget our heroes in this town, as it has been said. We do have writers, poets, artists, people who have done great things in their lives. So let's keep that as a little idea that we can curtailate. But I'm just saying, please, let's not change the name of the middle school to anything but Dr. Copley's honor. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak at this time?
Good evening. My name is Keisha DeZeta, District Three Town Meeting Member, two thousand and seven Norwood High graduate. Pretty long history with the town. My mother started working at Norwood Hospital in two thousand and two, up until tragic blood. I came tonight just out of curiosity as a town meeting member, trying to be involved in everything in the town and as an observer. One thing I heard a lot tonight was legacy, history, keep. Those key words tell me, and when you mentioned that you opened up the discussion to town, to the community, if you look behind me, it's pretty empty, and most of the people look the same. So it tells me, and sitting in town meeting in May, it tells me that there's a certain group of people that run things in this town, that make certain decisions in this town. And unfortunately, others are either overlooked or they just don't participate, which is really discouraging. Not to piggyback off of what this madam said, but I think a name change is far from what's important at the Copley and in Norwood public schools. I don't, I honestly don't, I don't want to dismiss any of the hard work of Mr. Fitzpatrick or Dr. Copley, any of these people. I personally just don't believe glorifying one person. Like this madam said, there are a bunch of people who who have done great things around the town. Just name the school one generic name. And as we have, you know, different rooms, we can name these ones after these people and get creative. Have the kids, the students involved in the conversation. Couple of words I did not hear. It's changed. I didn't hear welcome. I didn't hear anything about the new faces coming into the Copley. While Dr. Copley does have a rich legacy and has done great things around this town in the educational system, in two thousand and twenty-three, you know, most of the kids don't look like him and don't represent what he stood for, I'm sure. So there are more pressing issues at the Copley that need to be addressed. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dazeeda. Would anybody else wish to speak at this time? Do you get to go twice?
I'm going to thank you. I'm going to give you some spiritual acts. I do get to talk twice. I serve you. I'm Dr. Joseph Redd, 78, District 5 Town Meeting Member. You're right. My business partner, my business partner and I just opened up a new venture, a branch. He stood by me, I stood by him. He's black, I'm white. There's no color between us. He's thinking. I hope one day I can say that all of them are public school kids. We're one family in one great town. All I say is reach out to us, Joe. Much like you said, there's no one here. It's a travesty, and it's a travesty to these guys. Your agenda is far from naming the Copley Middle School. Being very honest with you, you know what's going on. I don't want to repeat it, because you know what? You're educated adults. You went through five superintendents under my surges under my tenure. It's only the beginning. That was the most crucial role based in all public schools in your job. When I was a year old, my father would say, when he served 34 years on the board, the seat is not yours, it is the town's, it is people's. They vote you into it, they vote you out. So not being, not doing that attitude, but those words I delivered by, trust me, I would do more pricing issues than this. I just, I applaud you. It's a hot, hot board. We had seven members, and it was hot. I think that we need to focus on budget issues. You certainly know what needs to be done, because you'll come in front of a town meeting, and to go in front of a town, an A to town meeting is not a nice thing. And I ask you to take your charge seriously. This is really minutia at the game that you guys are at. I applaud you. I thank you. It's so hot. You know, you go home to your families, you hear it from your friends. I just, I think that when my board, we were like you. We chose a name that we read it very seriously. I moved Fitzy's name forward to be the principal of the Cleveland School. No guy, no one loved him the way that I did. I'm Dr. Joseph. I was the chairman of the Norman School Committee that appointed your brother to the Norwood, to the Cleveland School principal job. Fitzy was no more comfortable sitting in a classroom than he was anywhere else. I have a building named after him. Fitzy wanted to be on a ball field, and I'll deal with the kids. Fitzy was all about when you just had inclusion, getting people together. There is, there is, you know, no more respect than me for Fitz. There's no more respect to me than having a name taken away from your family, he had that of his committee. I worked, I did my homework on Dr. Copley. People said, I don't know about the school, so shame on us, we need to educate. That being said, I was also the school committee captus in Norwood High School, in the George Josephian Auditorium. I took on a superintendent who wanted to give him a photo log in the lobby of the administration section. George, I know, was like that in the whole world. George's place is where it belongs, in an auditorium where he speaks for the whole town and loves the whole town, too. So as you take on this charge and future charges, I just want to tell you, you guys, much like me on District 5, we're half the Willow people, no one else. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph, and appreciate the words. I know you served and you understand, so I do appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak? Does anybody on the table wish to make comments before we go to a question? And does anyone wish to ask any questions at this time? And so move over into, you know, question links, or if anybody has any questions they can ask about the process, about the naming, about the history, or anything that you still don't think is clear, please, please feel free to ask at this time. Okay. That is, it was, you weren't all set. Okay. Well, we did say we could do close with comments. So I'll actually answer the colleagues first. Does anybody want to say anything before closing?
Can you just clarify for everybody that we're voting for?
Yes, yes. I'm going to be part of my closing, so we all set up. So what I left out on the bottom of these sheets here as a what's next, so I just wanted to thank everybody very much for your discussion this evening, for all the comments, for all of the words about, you know, Mr. Fitzpatrick and Dr. Copley, and even for, you know, naming this school, you know, Norwood Middle School. I think this was exactly what we wanted to hear, we wanted to have people out, we wanted to make sure we were hearing from the community what your thoughts are. This was the process we voted on, and this is what we intended. So the next steps, we do have this on our school committee agenda tomorrow to vote on the decision of the committee for what the school name will be. So just wanted to make you all aware of that. And again, I just want to make sure to thank everybody for your time and your commitment and your passion to this issue, and for coming in and being specifically engaged in, you know, engaging the process and understanding, and more than that, looking for answers, you know, and being receptive to what we're trying to put forth up here. Yeah, so I guess if there's no other questions, and we are, Mr. Bay, you're all set?
Yeah, I'll just say if you have, if you have, sorry, if you have feedback for us outside of the middle school naming form, which because of open meaning law, we're bound to only listen and have open, have public slate. So we can only be discussing the middle school name in this form. You can always come to our public comment, and you can always email us. I recommend emailing us so that we can respond back to you.
And piggybacking on that, just as a reminder, if you do wish to hear from each of us individually, you need to email us each individually within a separate email. Sometimes we get that question quite a lot. If you email all five of us in one email, unfortunately, you do not have a school committee ad that goes to all five of us. That is a common misconception. You do actually have to type all five of our email addresses, I apologize. But then you will see the response from, actually, the Facebook will respond to you and for all of us on behalf of the entire committee. So just wanted to let you all know. But if there are no questions at this time, I'll just leave this for a close. Thank you.
Thank you.